Steve?
Yeah.
Steve?
Here.
Gordon?
Here.
If I call the people who are not here?
No, just, just in case.
And Jackie?
All right, so we have four of us here, so we do have four. So keep an eye on, if everyone please rise and, well, say it long when you have a budget. This point, we'll meet the agenda, yeah, for the approval of the agenda, were there any comments, changes? Anything? I mean, other than the agenda, I had the date changed, but I think we probably haven't updated. Yeah. So. If I'm hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. All right. Oh, second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, agenda approved. And now we'll go on to the minutes from November 26th of 2024, starting with page one, reading. Any changes, comments?
Down the bottom, of course, is almost the second line, engineer's memo and have an estimate that should be ended with an easement recorded.
You said the second line, but, okay. All right, can you get that, Morgan?
Yep.
All right. Any others? Moving on to page two.
Patients. The Lord of Beach Star should be beach stair permits. Other spoken proposed moratorium street beach stair.
Right? Yeah, the OSD.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure you were. Any others? You got to go with Morgan?
Yep.
Yeah. And then page three.
Item number three, again, it should be with instead of.
Got that, Morgan?
Okay.
All right. Okay, that's. The minutes. entertain a motion to approve, the minutes has changed. Support, all those in favor? Aye. All right, so move on to. Public comments. And so at this time, we would, you know, we open up the floor to a public comment. And you're welcome to come up, you have three minutes as an individual, five minutes as a group, to speak on matters within, you know, concerning the township or. Whatever it is that you have concerns with. However, know that today there is a public hearing for, for the, actually, two different ones, for the. Both projects that are up in front of us today, so if you're here specifically for a project that's under the new business section, you can speak now, or. It'd probably be more relevant if you waited and just spoke at the time of the, of the, you know, the public hearing for that individual project. But having said that, I will open up the floor to a public comment at this time, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward. And if you do, just state your name, your address, and they said you have three minutes. Is there anyone that has anything to say at this time?
I was just, you can ask a question. I'm, uh, my name's Brian Good, I live on 65th Street, but I, uh, my, my parents own a house on Lake Shore. And I find the trustee, so I'm trying to sell it. And so, you know, we, we, it's been on the market since last May, so. We had a buyer and he, he had a lot to pack out, and so he, I guess there's a lot going on in Lake Shore. That is what I heard, you know, a lot of, of their changing setbacks, which is fine, I'm not, but I'm just trying to understand, you know. Like, like I'm being, you know, I, I don't know, you know, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of what, you know, how this affects, you know. My efforts as a trustee representing beneficiaries, and how, you know, you know, what, what, how does this affect my mom's problem?
So, at this time, the public, this, uh, the public comment period, it's not a question to answer one, however, I would think if he came into the township and. I mean, would it be you or Daniel or?
Yeah, I would be happy to, we could do a Zoom or have a phone call, and that, or meet in person here on Tuesday.
I'm sorry.
I'm here on Tuesday, so I'd be happy to meet with you in person on Tuesday, or if you want to talk before then, we can talk on the phone or.
Okay, so, just, I'm sorry, just one more. So, this meeting really doesn't, like, there's no planning decision or discussions on, you know, changing setbacks or?
We are going to discuss that, the Lake Shore overlay is item C in the new business section, so we will be discussing that. And I encourage you to stay, it's just going to be a conversation after the two other items.
Yep. All right, anyone else? All right, this time I will close the public comment period, and we will move on to item number six, new business. Which is public hearing and consideration of a special land use for an existing building. Unit 15 of Just Barnes located in 6764 Just Barnes Drives, for a Class B cannabis grow facility, applicant is 420 support. So, I guess at this point, I will have.
Yeah, I can give a quick overview. Okay, this is an interesting request, as the planning commissioner previously approved a special land use for a cannabis grow facility at the location. However, the previous applicant did not open, and their special land use permit expired after one year. And the building is set vacant, even though it was fully built out for a grow facility, it, none ever operated there. So there's a new owner looking to open a facility, 420 Satori. They have a retail establishment in the city of Douglas. Or I think it's actually the city of Sagitton, perhaps, or maybe Douglas, no, Sagitton, Sagitton. And.
It's like Bentonville on them.
Okay.
It's, it's city of Douglas.
City of Douglas. And, so they're seeking a Class B cultivation license, so they have 1,000 plants in the facility. There are no changes to the exterior of the building, in the interior of the building, the fire district has done a review of the facility, our building inspector has been. Everyone has signed off on this, so it is, it's more of a procedural item to bring their special land use permit into. Compliance and, and reactivate it more or less. So, we went through the standards for the marijuana growers, we found that they met all the standards. In our zoning ordinance, they're more than 500 feet from a residential use. They included a written plan for disposal of spent plant material. They have digital key card access and a security system with video surveillance. They don't plan to have any outdoor storage of any materials or any outdoor refuge. They're not proposing any signage, and I spoke to the applicant about this, I mean, they're really wanting to stay low profile. They have very few employees, I think two, up to three, but really just one or two employees at a time, so they have enough parking for that as well. They don't plan to co-locate or stack any other license, licenses at this facility. Their carbon filtration system is in place, I remember looking and reviewing that. Several years ago when they were going to open. Their odor control plan includes negative air pressure, and they'll be monitoring. The carbon filtration system and change the filters every 12 months. They're connected to water and sewer, they're at least 500 feet from another, or from a residential building, and. Everything is taking place indoor. So, based on those standards, we found that the use would be harmonious with the adjacent properties and surrounding area. There are other cannabis grow facilities in this part of our township. There won't be any changes to the exterior of the building, so that standard is met. All of the conditions of the marijuana grow facility have been met, so we found that the operation would not be hazardous to your adjacent property. And the use would not place additional demand on public services. We just had a few conditions in our report, I mentioned earlier that the fire district and building department. Reviewed this and have issued a certificate of occupancy. We include a condition that those carbon filters should probably be replaced soon, just because it's been five years since they were installed. A condition that at all times the use and structure maintain compliance with local, state, and federal requirements. That any fees that are owed to the township for their marijuana license or permits would be paid prior to signing off at the state level. And if they do plan to change the grow facility into a different class or another activity, that they would have to amend the special use.
Okay. Thank you. So, with it being a public hearing, at this point, I'll open it up, the. For a public hearing, and so, any of you are here to speak upon this project, that the same rules as before. You have three minutes as an individual, five minutes as a group, as you approach, just say your name, your address, and Morgan will keep track of the time, she'll let you know when you're getting close. So, if there's anyone at this time that would like to come up to speak to. To this, what you just barns, project, and I, you know, your time.
My name is Brad Ripson-Skate, and nice to see you, Morgan and Ms. Wells and commissioners. I am one of the primary owners, and I welcome this opportunity in order to expand our business. And we, like Morgan mentioned, I mean, Ms. Wells mentioned, we expect to have a one primary, full-time grower. And probably two or three part-timers, there's only going to be two. We already have like three designated parking spaces, and basically, pretty much everything is consistent with what. Was well stated. And we're ready to move forward. I welcome any questions from the commissioners.
Yeah, at this point, I was going to have the, the audience come up and just see if there are any comments that, you know, they have, then maybe you could help address those comments as, as they come up if, if they're here, so. But. But maybe there is no one. Okay.
Watson, 6576 Herring Ridge Road. I'm the broker owner of the Remax Sagitton Building, which is also the neighbor to Satori, there are draft neighbors there. And I just wanted to say that since they've opened their business, since they've been there, they've been wonderful. We really appreciate having them there, they run a great business, we've never seen any negative issues at all, you know, people coming, going. And I just wanted to say that I think they're a great addition to the community, and I hope that their business continues to thrive.
Thank you. Always nice, nice to hear nice things about businesses coming in your community.
I did not claim that. Just on the record, we don't have any professional business relationship, I did not claim that, so, but thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay, at this point, I'll close the public comment period, and actually, we already had our, we'll feel here from the developer or the, the owner. So I guess this time I'll open up to planning commission members and see if you have any comments.
I'd like to channel Jackie and ask why are there two different spellings of marijuana?
Even with the letter from the mistake.
And now most people use the word cannabis, so. It was a change at the state level, and they initially had to change. Or that age, I mean, that's the age, yeah.
I had nothing to do with that.
I have theories.
That's how we say it.
This seems extremely straightforward.
Yes.
It's a procedural thing, you know, I haven't seen or read anything or heard anything that gives me pause, so I. Don't have any.
Okay, I have one comment, and maybe you can address this one, A. As far as the filters, I've, I've heard from some residents, I'm not going to say a lot, but from a few people that, that come off of that, it's a 36 there. And they commented that they, they still catch the smell of, of cannabis. You know, they, so, and they, you know, and obviously, it never really smelled it before, smelled it before, but. Is there, have there been any comments from the general public regarding that, or?
That's a good question, I have never, I've never heard a comment at all. We do have three grow facilities, they are quite large, two that are generally large. But I.
They're coming up.
Yeah, they're coming along by the smell.
I, I.
On occasion.
It depends on how many, I guess.
I don't live there, so I drop by and saw and didn't much of it. Yeah, I guess there are rules about how much odor is allowed to be. Noticed from certain distances, and they would just have to live up to those rules, right?
Yeah, and I mean, I think it's, if there are issues with that odor. That's pre-existing, obviously, before this one has come in.
Yeah.
That we could reach out to those operators, just to make sure that they're, you know, keeping up with their filtration system.
Maybe my question to you is, and I don't know anything about these filtrations, I don't intend to, but. Because there's a filter there, and we've discussed that, and I know that's, the filter is meant to be changed every 12 months, does it's six months? Or six months? Oh, it's every six months?
It should be six.
Okay. I thought it was 12, but maybe, maybe it is six months, and then, you know, this here says filters will be changed every 12 months.
Elsewhere it says six.
Does it? Okay. So is it every six months?
Should be a six month, yes.
Okay. And I didn't know if more regular filter changes would affect that, or maybe that's not even where the odor comes from, I, I really have no idea.
Well, I, I guess one of my questions would be, has the odor always been there, or is it just because Jars, which is, is a, is a retail establishment. Right in the ingress to the Just Barnes location?
Comments that I heard was before jars was at its existing location. They were across the highway and across the streets at that time. So, you know.
It's not so good.
Right, I mean, you, you do notice it, I mean, because it's, it's presented to us as planning commissioners, as, you know, it comes up and, oh, there's this great filtration system in place, and. You know, and like, we're not going to smell anything, but then, then I hear comments that people do smell, and I'm hearing it in the audience as well, but. And I, I know you're meeting in the question, that same place, but I'm just asking, is there anything that, that growers can do to better. You know, eliminate that odor?
There is existing growers there, so.
I know, yes.
I can speak to them and see, and maybe get back to Ms. Wells, and see, and see, and just, I'll, I'll relay your comments to.
Yeah. Because I, I just have a feeling that if, you know, there's, how many is, there's two in there now, or at least two? So two, and then the odor is at X, you know, say it's 2X now, and then when you go in there, it'd be 3X probably, and so, you know, at some point it just come, so. I, I just wanted, you know, us to be aware that, I, I've heard comments of it, so, and you to be aware of it as well. Well, and I, and I guess I'd request that you'd be, you know, a good steward of the, the area, and do what you can in order to keep that order down. That's really my only comment about it, otherwise that area is pretty straightforward.
So what's the action item?
So this would be a rec, this would be a motion to approve the special land use with the, I have conditions.
I mean about this.
Sorry. Um, the smell is something that we will follow up on, I'll talk to our code enforcement. Officer, and, and we can approach those growers and just have a conversation. The state of Michigan, the cannabis regulatory agency might also have some best practices that they're aware of, and maybe there's just a conversation. Because as you mentioned, they meet the requirement that we have, but perhaps that needs to be addressed.
Anybody's, entertain a motion?
I propose that we accept the recommendation and also the suggestion for follow-up on existing orders.
So, yeah, so at this point, so you're making a motion for, to recommend.
Just to approve the special.
To approve the special, yeah, the special land use for unit 15 of Just Barnes. Or the conditions, as, what do you put down as the five recommendations? Yeah. Certain seconds?
Second.
Seconds? All right, so we'll call both. Come on.
Yeah.
All right, Steve? Yes? Okay. Morgan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep, A, yes. All right. Search through. All right, my thank you, thank you for your input. Okay, then that seems to be the, the agenda item of the night. We'll move on to item B, the public hearing, consideration of planned unit development for proposed 35 unit development. Surprise with 10 complex buildings, 20 units total, two townhome buildings, 12 units total, and three accessory dwelling units, and a parcel 20 dash 003 dash 028 dash 00. So, and maybe, should we do this same one, A, where the, of you, and then? Public or should we do the public first?
Um, I think it would be good if I, I could give an overview, I know that the engineer is here representing the applicant. I, you, I'm not sure if the applicant is here on Zoom or not, but I know that they are not able to be here. I also spoke with the engineer that has prepared the submission, who is not here today, so we have Mr. John Mail from Excel Engineering. He shared that they're not expecting any sort of approval tonight, they realize that this is likely something that would be postponed, a decision would be postponed to a later meeting. They, he shared with me that they hope to hear comments from the public, they want to have some direction. And that they're, you know, looking forward to having the public hearing and the discussion tonight, but they realize that there's. It's very unlikely that any approval would be given tonight, they're comfortable just asking for any decision to be tabled. But they still want to go on with the hearing and have conversation.
Okay. So I think it'd be good then, if we have, you give a, a general description, then I can, public comment.
Okay.
What, or you did say the engineer's here?
Yes, John Bell is here. Yeah, I was just, I was looking at that.
Morgan ran out, so maybe she's.
Technical difficulties.
Shall we, shall we wait?
Or not?
I'm just going to be over there then. Strange. Yeah, you should.
I just got some of the color.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can share your call with us.
Or for the models, just.
Now we're red, we're good?
We're good.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
All right, so we got an application from Koochi Builders and Excel Engineering, this is a request for a planned unit development. Planned unit development requests are basically a rezoning, and it's, it's essentially a custom zoning district that. Is unique to this parcel, and the basis for that zoning district is the underlying zoning that is in place, that then is used to create what's called a parallel plan. A parallel plan could show what would be built under current zoning, and it establishes density. And once that density is established, the PUD. Tool allows the applicant to modify setbacks, oftentimes they cluster the developments, they might mix building types. To create a project that has the same density that would be allowed, and then they're also able to ask for a bonus density on top of whatever the base density is that's permitted. So that's what the applicant is looking to do with this project. There's not 8.97 acres, it's at 137th and Blue Star Highway. As, as the chairman mentioned, the applicant is looking at ways to unit buildings, and attached townhouses, as well as three accessory dwelling units. There is a total of 35 units in this project, and that includes the accessory dwelling units. There was a parallel plan that was provided, we did receive some later comments from the township fire district. That the parallel plan needed to consider some other things, so they're, they don't agree that the parallel plan matches what zone, underlying zoning would allow. Zone underlying zoning would allow, so there are some questions that speak to just the base density at this point. Nevertheless, um, the parallel plan that the applicant submitted showed um twenty six units could be built. And with the twenty five percent bonus, they could receive an additional six units for thirty two. I believe that the applicant is is considering the accessory dwelling unit not part of the unit count. So there's thirty two kind of home sites with. Three accessory, so that's a conversation. Right, um, the applicant is proposing open space, a pickleball court and trails. Um, I don't believe that the open space pickleball and trails are for the public. I believe that they are for the people who live within the development. Um. That being said, there are several things in the memo that I prepared that the planning commission should discuss and turn in. Um, we have certain standards for um a P U D in general. Um, to be considered for P U D. We want to see that there's innovation and creativity and land use. Um, that the development, the layout or the mix of uses is providing something that we wouldn't ordinarily see in the township without underlying zoning. That there's an imaginative approach to the residential areas, a mix of house types. That there's conservation and preservation of natural and cultural resources. That it's an efficient use of land and well-designed arrangement of building streets, utilities and other features. That the buildings are energy efficient, that there's dedicated open space and connectivity of open space and greenways. That open space isn't just setbacks, that it's. Open space is preserving viable natural features or unique character on the land. Or that it's concentrated in such a way that it's usable, that it's not just thought of as someone's backyard area. Um, and that there is a preservation of the small town or rural character appeal here in in Sager Town Township. Um. We noted that the applicant hasn't provided the um a table that outlines the dimensional requirements of the. Underlying zoning and then the proposed dimensional requirements, so that is something that's deficient. Uh, we also know that they're proposing a sixty foot road easement and our ordinance requires sixty six. I don't believe that that's something that can be buried in a P U D. Um. The setbacks because of that difference in road right of way impacts the setback. Uh, dimensions because you don't have that extra six feet, so that's something that we noticed. There's also just a question about the um the street space and the pedestrian areas. And um and how the sidewalks kind of blend into the street and there's not a real clear differentiation between. The 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 driving surface, the parking, because there's on-street parking. And then the sidewalk and it just seemed like that whole space blended together and there wasn't a separation. Usually there is a green belt or some type of perp way. Um. That was also a challenge when you look at the layout because people might the the um the driveways. May not accommodate the length of a vehicle and so you might have a vehicle that extends back into the sidewalk. So that's something to be thinking of or something for the applicant to think about when they return because. You you might have somebody with low vision or you might have someone with mobility challenges and they're not expecting. That there's going to be a vehicle parked in that sidewalk space. When it comes to open space, I think it's important that the planning commission and even the applicant think through. Kind of the thin strips of open space and those would not be counted towards the bonus um towards towards. Meeting the criteria for a density bonus if the open space is just kind of that leftover area. That if it's area that again is just a rear yard or. Could be construed as private because of the location. Um. In terms of the trail, we're a little concerned that the trail is on the far east side of. The open space area and the parcel uh that's heavily wooded today. It provides a natural buffer to Goshorn Creek. Um, it would make more sense to either not have that trail or locate it somewhere else where you're not going to be removing trees. Because that is one of those natural features that we consider um important for the township. Would be something that would be preserved in a P U D type of development typically. Um, we're also not that they haven't shared with us the material of the trail, the width of the trail, whether it's public or private. Same with the pickleball courts. Um. We would like to know more about the price points. Um. The water sewer, the township engineer provided a report. They did notice that there's a dead end water main at the end of the proposed private road. They're requiring that the water may be looped. And that would need to loop out to sixty fifth street to the west. Um, if they're not successful at gaining access or easement for that. Um, the township would need to have a conversation with the applicant about. The fact that it would remain a dead end. Um, we've had that happen in the past. It's not necessarily a. A deal killer for the development. It's it's a preference. It's the best thing for the water system to have a loop system. For the good of the community in general, not just this project. Um. So those are some of the main highlights. I don't want to spend too much time going through word for word of the report. Um, there's other comments in here and I'm happy to answer questions. Um, this this site was up for a P U D back in two thousand and six. Um, it did expire, so that's no longer um in play at this time, but. Uh, we do have those files and it can be examined if someone wants to look at those. But um that applicant is also proposing modern and traditional buildings that could be selected. I think that's something for the planning commission to talk through. My understanding of the intent of our zoning ordinance, which has for variation in design, is that we don't have. The same building stamped out one after another. I think the the. Having a a traditional design and then a modern design, I don't know that that was the intent either. I thought. I was thinking the intent was perhaps more. Having the same style, same modern, but that there would be variations on a modern design. Or variations on a traditional, not that you're kind of switching the style building by building. But again, that is something for the planning commission to discuss. And then the other last item is the garage frontage. Um. The duplex units, um, one of the units is a side loaded unit and so. There isn't a garage door at the frontage per se. It is a window. The garage door is to the side. However, the garages themselves extend forward um beyond the the front door of the building, the entry of the building and. The the building entry is not um. It's it's not prominent. It's not um. Kind of apparent. It's kind of behind and off to the side of the garages and and. I think that's something to just be aware of with this.
Okay, thank you. Guess at this time I'll invite the engineer. Do you want to? Sorry. John, Jeff, yes.
Good evening. My name is John Mail with Excel Engineering. My remarks brief because I'll probably start talking. Um, on the back end of one of one of these calls. So. Um. Like Lene mentioned. You know, we we presented this plan. Um. And we we know that there are. You know, between comments from them and comments from the engineer, comments from fire, there are things that. That we want to discuss you guys and and the public to kind of get a feel for kind of a resubmission. And that's kind of what our goal was tonight. Um, just a couple of things from Lene's report. The amenities are they are intended to be private for the. I don't know how. How that's enforced if it's a long trail, but that's that is the intent. The the trails which kind of go through here, I know Lene was. Kind of worried a little bit about the trees. It's our intent. I mean, we're showing them on there, but we're not going to take down any bigger nice trees. We're going to work around it. It's it's going to be like a six foot. Like a natural either wood chipper. Kind of aggregate path. Through the woods, however, however, is its best fit. That's that's the intent of that. Right? Looking at the like the P U D project amenities or the. The recognizable benefits that are listed, it seems to me like there are several those that that fit this that were trying to cluster the open space. Now, obviously, there's some differences in what we had kind of considered as open space. For for what Lene is ruling and that might affect the bonus, I guess. Predominantly, but I think if we take those out, we're still at the twenty five. But we might not have the extra that we needed. I think the intent of the the housing. The, you know, we were kind of writing the housing title because that's what was requested. So that was the the owner's. Thought about the traditional and modern design, but we're certainly open to feedback.
Yes. But thank you. Alright, so then at this time I'll open up the meeting to a public uh public comment and I will. Start with rule one and as I said before, you'll have three minutes. I as a group, you can have five minutes. Morgan will kind of monitor the time, but please say your name, your address and. Feel free to.
Please, good to see you all again. Uh, I'm John Hellrick. I live at three five two two sixty fourth street just across the Goshar Creek from the eastern edge of this project. And I'm also here because three of my neighbors are all out of town. Kind of. I want to start with. Ms. Wells alluded to this, but I moved here in two thousand and four. Late in two thousand and five, we were noticed. For a public hearing on a project for the same property. What's this about? I better go show up and see. So that was the first time I ever spoke to planning commission. Oh, and I didn't want to make full disclosure to the public. I was on the planning commission until this past December as the township board representative. The third term of the township board. It's interesting feedback on this side. So back in two thousand and four, the P U D that was proposed, it's called Goshar Woods. And a lot of us had concerns. Right at the edge of the property here, it's a very steep, deep line to into Goshar Creek. Goshar Creek is fed out of Goshar Lake. And it really runs almost year round. It's rarely frozen over. It's a very active creek. And we um. Requested an environmental impact study at the time, which I don't think ever happened because we wanted to know if there'd be any effect. From being this close to the creek and in this project, I'm very concerned about the base, the water basin here being right on the property line. So that's an issue. Um. And then more importantly, we did request and and received from planning commission and the board at the time, a condition was. A twenty, I think it was twenty five foot buffer, not to touch any of the trees along the property line. Historically, this area was a Christmas tree farm and it was mostly shrub trees that had grown up over time.
One minute.
I need more. But it was required that they not touch any hardwood trees. Anywhere, but to maintain this entire route and that's why I'm concerned about. Is address the the nature trail, which sounds like a great idea, but it should not involve any removal of trees in this protected buffer should you. Maintain the buffer here. Uh, let's see, they already said that. The nature trail is a concern, right? The storm basin, I mentioned that the location seems problematic to its impact on the creek. I know there's issues on municipal water and sewer, which I know you will address further. Needing an easement through the property on the other side, the west side of the property, which could be an issue, so we want to retain that. I do want to say I'm totally in favor of new housing projects. I've been fighting for that for years. A lot of these homes look attractive. So I hope what you analyze is the number of homes. Right? I share the issues of a garage because we just went through the zoning review together, so. Oh, and also I don't know if this has been addressed yet, but it was a big issue back then. The fire district was concerned that there was no ingress out. There was just this one entrance. And they wanted. A place for their. Life-saving equipment to get out of the property. So that was brought up back then. I don't know if they weighed in as yet, but that's uh that's basically it. I'd like you to. Remember that the history of what's gone before and do your best to uh keep the buffer. Perhaps do an environmental impact study and work with the project because I think it's welcome. In many ways, but I want to make sure it's done late for all the neighbors and the wildlife and the creek itself on the east side. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else in row one? Alright, uh, row two, no, I won't think anyone's in, row three?
Can you guys hear me?
Oh, yeah, we'll we'll get to Zoom later.
Okay.
My name is Jan Vanens and I've lived in my house on sixty fifth street for forty four years. Over this time, I have enjoyed the privacy, the beauty, the peacefulness, the green space and the wildlife in my yard. But that soon may come to an end as my backyard and my son's backyard directly abut the proposed development. On its western perimeter. From our windows, we would look out at thirty five housing units totaling fifteen building housing. Approximately a hundred and forty four residents squeezed into nine point thirty three acres. I understand the need and am not opposed to more housing in Sagatuck. What I am opposed to is the magnitude of this development, which seems out of character for this special area. This is a lush and beautiful corner of our township and one that plays a vital role in our ecosystem. The development will have a dramatic impact on the local environment with the loss of green space. Destruction of habitats, displacement of wildlife and increased pollution to Goshorn Creek. Further, the parcel and surrounding infrastructure cannot currently support a development of this size. Specifically being unable to provide adequate water and sewer. The developer proposes digging a water line through my property. So it can hook up to infrastructure on sixty fifth street. Needless to say, I will not support a water main easement that mars and devalues my property. Safety is also threatened by this development. As you're well aware, the junction on one hundred and thirty fifth. Sixty fifth street, Blue Star is a six-point intersection on a curve causing major blind spots on a highway. With a relatively high speed limit.
One minute.
Accidents here are sadly nothing new. And in a hundred, add in a hundred plus new residents using this intersection to access town and the interstate. You have the recipe for a devastating uptick in collisions, many of which could be quite severe. you have the recipe for a devastating uptick in collisions, many of which could be quite severe. I obviously don't own the land and can't control how it is used. But as a neighbor and community member, I implore you to vote no on the proposed use. The negatives here far outweigh the positives. And that's my story.
Thank you.
Anyone else in row three?
Hello, my name is Lisa Becken. I am a 20-year resident of 351664th Street, town neighborhood. Okay, I own this steep slope down the street, okay? I am directly affected by this proposed disruptions. Since we will share the east property line, my major concern is traffic between walkers, bicyclers, the traffic due to spectators, clear road, any proposals that you're going to do out here on Blue Star. Our little two-lane road can't handle this. It's very dangerous out there now, okay? I'm really having a hard time living in your neighborhood, but will remain safe, quiet, peaceful, and a great place to live like it is right now. Other concerns are noise, possible increase in crime, the use as vacation rentals. And I understand that progress, excuse me, I understand progress will happen and that something will be built there. But please keep in mind, we long-term residents have a right to our peacefulness also. Thank you.
Did everyone in row three?
Oh, can I add one thing?
I think you still have time.
You got me listed on your map as Lisa Becken, B-E-C-C-A. It's B-E-K-K-E-N.
May row four?
Hi, Dave. My name's Eric Hequist. I live at 3054 Lakeshore Drive in Douglas. I'm here with Kevin and Maria Miller. We have the house on 6458 135th Ave., which is probably the most impacted property by this development. Just kind of want to back up everything John said. And as it had your adjacent neighbors and development to be. We've been through this in Douglas as well, of course. Seems rather excessive for the setting and the creek. The creek's especially a concern there. And that land's pretty swampy as well on the back there. I mean, there's, it's a very natural area. It seems like a more limited residential development would be, would be more reasonable. That's, but basically, Maria, Kevin asked me to reply to your comments, okay?
Okay.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Anyone else in the back row? Well, I think we've got someone on Zoom at least.
If you'd like to speak on Zoom, please raise your hand.
Uh, this is Maria Miller.
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, this is Maria Miller. I live, I live at, can you hear me?
Yeah, Maria, do you just state your address and where you're at? And then you got three minutes.
Okay, I live at 6458 135th Avenue. I live directly, well, this development is right behind me that they are trying to pass through. This greatly affects, as everyone has said, all of us neighbors who have, I believe, moved to Sagatuck many years ago for the reasons why privacy, just enjoyment of how the, I'm so sorry, I'm out of, I'm out of state. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I believe in growth of our town as well. I, I don't quite agree with this location being that, that, the right area. Mrs. Von Inns and John Hemmerich, we all moved here for a certain reason, and I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that it's not that we're against the growth of our city. But I, this really jeopardizes the land, the, the creek I have been worried about for a while just because obviously we're in a commercial district, but it needs to be protected for what it's worth because we just can't lose that. So I just want you guys to consider that another, another location maybe for something like this. And again, we don't, I know I don't own the land, but it would really change a lot for our community. So I would really make a wise decision on this. And that's all I have to say, and I apologize. I'm out of town, I'm working. But I just wanted to make sure you guys knew, this is very important to me as well as my fellow friends.
Okay, thank, thank you for zooming in, even though you're out of town.
It means a lot to me to keep what we have with growth in the right way.
Okay. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and would like to speak, please raise your hand. Going once, going twice.
All right, and we will officially end the public comment period. And we'll move on to the commissioners' part of the meeting here. I, I guess what I would like to do at this point, just so we set the stage, is I would actually entertain a motion to just postpone this at this point, and then we'll, if we get a second, then we'll open it up for discussion. And, and that way we kind of know where we're at at this point. Because I, I know there's a lot of things out there that have not been addressed to satisfy staff. And so I, I think that, to me, that would be the appropriate way. We can just say, okay, we're going to, I mean, that's, that's our intent. And then let's discuss it and get our comments out there to staff and the engineer, the public. And then we can, you know, and then we can take the ball.
Isn't that what the applicant is basically asking?
So you guys agree? I'll entertain that motion.
So you want to postpone with comments following?
I would, I think we just need to, yeah. If, do you think that's appropriately a word as postpone?
I think that, I, I, that's how, yeah, we typically use the word postpone because tabling, then you have to take it on and off the table whenever you're meeting. So you can postpone it until the applicant returns. So we, they would have to return and, you know, within enough timeframe for us to do our staff reports for an upcoming evening.
But we don't have to postpone it with conditions or comments. No, we're just, we're just voting to postpone.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so basically, you've provided comments to the applicant. The public has provided comments to the applicant. We're asking the applicant to take those comments and come back with an alternative plan, revised plan?
Yes, and between the motion to postpone and second, that's when Planning Commission has discussion. And then they vote on them, you would vote on the motion.
Yeah, we'll vote after we discuss it. Anyone?
I'll shoot it postpone.
Yeah. That's second, second, true. Okay. All right, and at this point, I'll open it up for discussion. So we've, we've got a motion on the table to postpone the project. And at this point, we will, we'll open it up for discussion. So I think, I think a lot of this is kind of really just to voice our concerns for, you know, comments and help the, help Linay, the engineer, the public. And so we can start with whomever would like to start.
Well, let's start with you. See, why is it called an ADU? There are three of them. I know that, but why, why aren't they just going to stand along? Basically, one bedroom.
I don't have an answer to that. That would be a good question for the applicant. It might be that there was a thinking that they wouldn't, an ADU would not count as a unit in the density bonus calculation perhaps. But I can't answer that.
Oh, do we, and I'm relatively new here, but how do we feel about overparking in general? It's a lot of parking spaces, like, maybe it's a good thing. Where I come from, it's a bad. I've never seen it before until.
Well, that's kind of great to see.
Yeah. But parking count, I mean, this is almost four to one, was it? Three to one?
Especially with it being a private community and not open to the public. So what's the need for the vision part? Correct, you'd be the question.
Um, why would we give relief from 66 to 60 feet? That seems like, like, it needs to be. By what the ordinance, right, for 66? Push it more towards the eastern, west, I don't know, some of the stuff.
And if I remember right, Linay said that with the PUD, there's no room for, to go from 60 to 60, or from 66 to 60. And you have to meet the 66 foot right away required. Yeah.
The garages is probably in a static discussion. My other question, the last one was the densely, because the parallel plan is obviously less dense, fewer units. Are they trying to put more into better return on investment, I guess, if I put, is that the only reason?
Hard to, hard for me to answer that. I think that there's, there could be various reasons. A density bonus definitely would result in more units to be sold, which helps with the return. A density bonus is also would be something the applicant is looking to do to help provide more housing in our community in general. Those would be the two.
And then the garage, it's I get where we're coming from. Certainly, I don't like looking at garages on streets either. I think they've done some of them while they've turned them so they're 90 degrees. I don't know what to do about it, so really just a question or comment thrown out. Oh, and the other thing was that the two styles, they don't care for the modern. There's a modernist architect, I would follow, like, sort of, or, I mean, this, this man, they don't seem to create a community. I much prefer the traditional. That's my preference opinion.
Uh, my first comments would be that without any dimensions shown on the plan, it's difficult to know if the setbacks are correct. They're also including required setbacks as part of the open space, which, and easements, which they can include as open space, if that's my understanding. So they don't necessarily actually have a bonus for density. Um, there is 25% open space required. And the way they're showing it separated, it really, I think, 50% is supposed to be all in one area contiguous. And with all the easements and setbacks that are required and not dimensioned, I don't think they're going to get the density that they're showing on here. That's the main thing. I have a lot of different comments, but that's really the main. And there is a development over by the state park that has traditional and modern homes in it. I don't know if anyone's seen it. It's a little odd. Yeah. That's my visual comment. The ADU that's all garage, the, the garages on the condos don't bother me, but the ADU that's all garage space. It has to be less than 40% of the building, and that doesn't comply. Um, and most of my other comments, you've already covered. But I just don't think they're going to get the density that they're showing here.
Seems to me that the ordinance must have meant that the different styles are varying building, typology and design, buildings that are speaking to each other, these don't speak to each other.
I think it's more in reference to roofline changes, material changes, setbacks. Or it doesn't mean necessarily two completely different styles of architecture.
So I, I've heard sentiments I've heard already. And what I heard from people that live in the vicinity of this proposed PUD is exactly what I would be saying at the lecture in myself, if I were you, that the magnitude seems inconsistent with the land. And you explain why this high density is unlikely to be lawful. But just looking at it, kind of imagining it next to neighbors, it's going to create tension as is right now. So I agree with everything else that has been said. And there's, I'm just talking about the really super obvious elephant in the room. It is this tremendous density next to neighbors who are, they're going to hear it. They're going to see it. They're going to experience it. Once it's built, it's never going away. So I look at the original parallel plan and think that seems appropriate more.
I, one of my big concerns, and, and I know this is bigger than just this development, but it's just the, you know, the, the safety of that intersection there at, at 135th and 65th in Blue Star. But we, we all know it's bad. And there's been discussion about it. And, and to add this many units and this many people and, you know, force that traffic onto, you know, into that intersection when, you know, in the morning, when the Blue Star is letting, you know, people are getting out of the Blue Star GM, you know, everybody's heading to work on Blue Star Highway. And it, it's just, and, and once again, I, I know it's bigger than this development, but this isn't going to help it. And it's only going to make it worse. So that's, that's definitely a concern of mine. I personally feel as a, with an engineering background, I, I think there should be a way to loop that water main. Uh, because I, I mean, I feel like it's, it's the right thing to do as far as the, the quality of the water that the residents are drinking. So I mean, I, I feel like that one's an issue. I, I, I don't know what the idea here is with, with that, you know, getting the density bonuses. And I know there's like the ADUs and I, which people are living on, to me, they're just units. I, I know we kind of discussed that. The, you know, this, I mean, I, I like the imagination with, you know, turning the garages, trying to do something a little different. I, I, I'm glad to hear from our architects, architects on the panel that they didn't know what was going on with the two different elevations. Because I, I didn't understand the two different elevations either, and I couldn't picture how they would work together, which didn't make much sense. But, but then even as you were trying to give the density bonuses to me, like, if they were trying to do some clustering here to create open space, and I just don't see it. To me, it, to me, it just looks like backyards, you know, as far as, as far as that goes. I mean, I see some of the open space areas, you know, off to the, off to the one corner. But, and then the offer amenities that, you know, really that, and I don't know how this plays into it. I don't recall, but if they're not open to the public, then, I mean, do they? I mean, there are amenities to the, for development, to the residents that are there. But does that really play into, you know, what we were trying to achieve with? If it's all, if it's all private, like the walking path is private, the pick-a-loft courts are private, the streets are private, they're, you know, I don't, you know, I don't see how that all works. But, uh, the question I had too on the. uh, the question I had too on the, this would be for the engineer. Uh, is, in that corner where we have the pond or where the pond is shown, is that the low point of the project? I can't really tell. On the, is that?
I believe it. Uh, seems like. I mean, I think, I think the site in general was pretty flat, but.
I'm just wondering, is that, does that force the elevation topography of the project, does that force that?
No, no, it's designed to be the, in the best spot, I guess, for the, for the project.
In the best spot for this design.
Yeah.
Parallel plan has it in that general.
And as it, it has a little.
Oh, that's key. Okay. I guess I'd like to see and I think this is just, you know, in general going forward, and maybe that'll even coincide with going to a sixty-six foot right away, but uh, I'd see that, at least the water main not be a you know, how we generally do this, but the water main is, uh, it never, never made sense to me to have like a, a private water main. Should almost, you know, that should be something that would be that would be public and maintained by the, by Cal Lake. Yeah, for obvious reasons, that.
I think that is, that is the intent.
Is that the intent?
Both of the water and sewer.
Okay. Yeah, it comes in the parking, which it just seems like it's it's everywhere and and to my, that would concern me is it opens up the ability to pack a whole bunch of people in a single unit. Or five cars parked out in front there. Uh, it just seems like a recipe for disaster to me. Oh, and then I had a comment to regarding, uh, just the sewer capacity issue. I know we've, uh, we've come across this in the past before where we've had, it was bigger units. Uh, but, but there's, you know, thirty-two units, and I don't know how many I don't know how many, uh, not how much sewer capacity that, that, uh, takes up, but I, I suspect there's been some conversation uh, the staff regarding.
There has been. I don't have an update on that, but it is an ongoing conversation with the city of Douglas and city of Saratoga. Mostly with the city of Douglas.
Yeah, then, so then the question comes to is, do you maybe you give sewer capacity to thirty-two units in one you know, one small area or other thirty-two you know, individual homeowners that are, you know, that can have sanitary act, type of the ability to die into the sanitary throughout the community that, that you maybe spread some of that out, or is that?
I've got prepared another conversation about that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking you, I'm just kind of throwing it out there, something for us to think about, yeah, for the next reiteration. So. Um. I think that was. I think that was all I, all I had.
When that, maybe I missed it, but did you run the numbers for as well? But the sites intersect. See to the subject.
So we do allow, um, the numbers for the buy right would be that parallel plan.
Oh.
Setback page, so, um, in the zoning district would allow duplex or two-unit buildings and twenty-six, so thirteen buildings each with a unit, two units.
And it's by right?
Definitely, yes.
What is, what is sixty?
Correct, yeah. Would still require review for condominium development. And approval.
Which I, I just personally wonder with that, I mean, I like the idea of somebody coming in with that PUD and coming up with some kind of knowing you need an asset and, uh, a different way to do it, maybe, you know, that satisfies the neighbors and rather than just coming in as a you know, a buy right, but I, I know that's their right to do, but obviously we created some new things in our ordinance to try to make it appealing to do the PUD, so. Uh, anyways, have and I don't have any other comments, uh. So I get the, this is a point that I was hoping to open up for a vote, uh, to, uh, the telephone, uh, postpone the, uh, the PUD for support certified unit development. Uh, probably someone who puts buildings to town, buildings and three accessory line units and parcel ten, dash zero, three, dash zero, two, eight, dash zero, two. And so, uh, I guess, point all. For instance, well, you just said it's all second. Oh, well, no, I, it's already, no, it's already been seconded, we're voting now. So I, I. Yes, yes.
Thanks.
Yes. Yes, yes. Okay, so, uh, projects postponed. And, uh, thank everyone for coming. I welcome the state for the rest of this. So we will now move on to, uh, I don't see a new business, uh, we need sure overlay ordinance discussion. I will turn over to Lanay to guide us through this.
So as we talked about in the past, and we've had public comment related to Lake Shore area, um, we've prepared an overlay or no that would, um, kind of proposed overlay boundary. But now, in the past, that's supposed to be. Other than that, I tried to talk. Okay. I can, um, share that, so the boundary of the overlay, and I can verbalize it too. And included and show you on our zoning map. Essentially, it would be this northern boundary of the township, which is the southern boundary of Douglas.
Yeah.
On the west side of Lake Shore drive all the way to Sanji's. I'm happy to answer questions about the overlay, but I'll just give an overview of what it is. Uh, the overlay establishes the intent and purpose of why we are proposing an overlay with, with have um, special zoning requirements above and beyond what the current zoning district has. The proposed ordinance includes the location, it talks about the uses that are permitted. The one item that would be prohibited would be basements, instead crawl spaces would be, um, permitted, not the basement. The goal is to minimize the, um, uh, cutting and filling and extensive excavation of those sandy and play, sometimes clay soils. So the basement would be kind of above and beyond what, you know, would be normally or above and beyond, I guess, just the crawl space, you would be getting even more. Um, the ordinance would limit lock coverage because we know that impervious surfaces increase stormwater runoff, which then can have, um, an impact on those sandy soils. So the lock coverage would be forty percent. Um, and it would be based on the buildable area of the parcel. So buildable area would be that area located outside of the setbacks. So you would essentially, and, and it would be, um, from the toe of the block, which is at the bottom, should be erosion hazard line, which is at the top of that block. Um, so that area would be excluded from the block coverage calculation as well. So basically what you're doing, you're taking the top of the, the land excluding the setbacks. And then you have that buildable area, the box, where you can place the structures. Forty percent of that could be covered.
What's the setback from the edge of the, like you, you mentioned the toe is the water's edge.
And the erosion hazard line.
What's the setback from the erosion hazard line?
I have that later on in here, so we move into that.
I should try and visualize.
Yeah. I'm very nice. I have not memorized all of that. Okay. Um, and this is just for discussion, we are not voting on this, I've, we let's, the, the goal would be discuss it, if there are big glaring challenges, we can discuss it at the next meeting. If it seems like something we want to consider uh, for public hearing, then we could set that public hearing for the next planning commission meeting, which would be in March. Okay. Okay, oh, we went to it in March, yeah, okay. Okay, so, um, lock coverage includes any impervious surface, the building, the structure, driveway, patio, porches, any hard surface with or without a roof or a jack area. Okay, site development, hopefully I have the setbacks in here, I think, uh, maybe. It might be the other underlying, okay, site development, so they say that buildings shall be built to the required setback line along Lake Shore Drive. So this is a little bit different, um, and this is something we, we met with, um, Eagle, and we talked to John Bea who does the permitting for high-risk erosion and critical dunes. So right now, we have a minimum setback, right, from the, from Lake Shore Drive, our minimum setback is forty feet. Um, so somebody could place their home anywhere from forty feet basically to the erosion line or to, um, the high-risk erosion setback that the state has. So when we talked to John, um, you know, we're seeing and he's seeing up and down the coast folks getting as close to that uh, erosion setback line as possible. And we understand why, right, to be closer to the water, however, that can you know, they haven't adjusted that setback line since the nineties. Um, and the water, you know, water levels are changing, and there has been erosion since then. So the goal was having folks build closer and at the setback line would be that we would have less tree removal um, water towards the water, we would have less construction towards that water's edge. Um, if something were to happen, the building would be closer to the road so that safety, you know, there's more safety that's not as far that, uh, the, uh, emergency vehicles would have to travel. Um, it gives more land area and space for runoff um, before the, the edge of that dune is kind of penetrated by runoff. So it's an idea. Again, these are all ideas that we're throwing out to, to, to talk about, so that would be number one. Um, fences in yard, fences and walls prohibited within the waterfront yard, so that is the the yard that faces the water. We do want to allow fences for place spaces, garden areas, um, four feet in height. Um, provided that doesn't remove any trees, you know, or have lots of vegetation. Driveways, um, we'd like to see those are located entirely outside of the side yard setbacks. Right now, a driveway can be, um, five feet from a property line. We'd like to see that the driveways are actually within the setback area, um, which I believe the side yards were asking to be fifteen feet. Um, driveway materials would be brass, gravel, or permeable pavement, so floors, asphalt, modular pavement, or permeable concrete. Those are suggestions that came out of some of the literature that we reviewed at the state for best practices for building in dunes. Um, a grading plan, this is something new, um, but given the excavation that has happened, given the sensitive soils, we would like to see a grading plan that's sealed by an engineer. This was something else that was discussed when we talked to the state about, you know, best practices for this area. He specifically mentioned wanting to make sure that sites are graded to flow towards Lake Michigan. Um, and they're graded in such a way that it's not concentrating all of the runoff, that it's kind of spread across the site. Um, right now, our ordinance allows projections into side yards like bay windows or, um, porches uh, as long as there isn't a room. Um, we'd like to say that those wouldn't be allowed to kind of penetrate that side yard again to minimize the and, and provide more separation between building sites um, from parcel to parcel. Underground pools, we'd like to prohibit those again, similar to the basement because of the excavation. Also underground irrigation, because again, that disturbs the the root system of the vegetation that's there. We want to require the same type of vegetation that the state recommends in critical dune areas, and that's a number eight. Um, there are county drains in this area, and, um, there had been some conversation where somebody wanted to, um, channelize the drain, some of the drains, or build over the, channelize and build over the drain. Um, instead, we're recommending that buildings be setback from those drains, forty feet. Um, prohibiting private roads in the overlay and that the depth for any new land division within the overlay would be three hundred feet. So that there's enough space to build um, and, and be away from the, from erosion line. The next section relates to excavation, earth moving and land contouring. Um, that it would be unlawful to excavate, move earth, or contour the land except within ten feet of the building footprint. Um, and except for the purpose of construction. So, you know, there wouldn't be full-on cutting, clear cutting and grading and contouring of property. It would only be for the purpose of building something new with an approved grading plan. Um, filling of earth or removal of earth to an elevation at or below the established grade of adjacent development would be prohibited. Um, without the express written approval of the township engineer and zoning administrator, and provided the request includes a grading and drainage plan. So it's prohibited unless you are given approval.
I think that's pretty common, or do you imagine existing property line and and, uh, well, I think it's supposed to.
Natural water courses, um, we're saying that they be maintained. Um, the installation of underground pipes or tile drains would be discouraged except when necessary for public safety. I think the goal is to maintain the, a natural, you know, what the natural condition is there as much as possible. Um, no excavation or contouring within a setback. If there is excavation or areas are modified, the soap slopes would be stabilized and no residual slope should be less than a one-six. Tree removal, this is like from the state of Michigan, critical dune. Act, that removal of trees in excess of eight inches in diameter outside of the area where the building, where structure would be. Act that removal of trees in excess of eight inches in diameter outside of the area where the building or structure would be. Um. Would be prohibited, except in the case of disease that are dying. And if you remove any, um, tree, that the stump and root system remains. And then there's a requirement for permitting. Um. Then there's a whole section on other zoning amendments that factor into this overlay because we have other. Sections of our code that regulate development. And this is where some of those setbacks are. Um, so the first thing would be adding the overlay in our zoning table. That's number one. Number two, in the tree protection zone. Right now, we regulate, um. Tree protection on certain streets and roads in the township. We would like to add Lake Shore Drive to this. We would like to add. Um. The east side of Lake Shore Drive to this. Now, I know there's some people who live and have property on the east side of this, so I. Again, we're throwing things on the wall, this might be a challenge. The tree protection, um, would be those larger. Trees, of course, if something's dying or, or dead, it can be removed, um, but we'd like those stones to remain. Um, we'd like to add a definition for Lake Shore overlay area, so that is, um. That would be added. The side setbacks, so this was a question that someone raised. Before we made this new ordinance, the side setbacks were fifteen. And I believe we, we did this thing where we said a total of. Of. Maybe was it thirty feet or twenty-five feet? With no side less than fifteen. Now, maybe Andrew, you remember even better than I do, but I can get you the exact language, but. We did this, this, this calculation where it was a total setback, so you added both sides, but no one side could be less than fifteen. Um, and it was complicated for people. So in our new book, we just went with a straight-up ten-foot side yard setback. So we actually changed the minimum from ten, from fifteen to ten. So in this proposed amendment, we would like to go back to fifteen. Um. Item number five is, um, is just a cleanup thing, it's, it's a reference that's mislabeled. That's all the item number five is. Number six is. Not necessarily related to the lake shore, it's more of a lesson learned. In mineral extraction, um, we want to remove this kind of exception. Where we allow mineral extraction, um, in certain cases, because we have, um, an issue with that. Temp- temporary land uses, mobile food units. Those are, those are food trucks. Um. Again, this is something lesson learned with the ordinance, these next things are more lesson learned. Um, we don't have anything that says how long you can have a food truck. So we wanted to add a duration not to exceed ninety days. Maybe we want to say you can. Get an additional ninety days to have the full shoulder season, or maybe it's one, one eighty, whatever it is, maybe. Let's talk about what makes sense for food trucks. Also with food trucks, that generators. Um, we've heard that generators can be disturbing and sometimes. They are near residential, or sometimes those food trucks might be located right on property lines. And so we wanted to put some hours of operation and also say that the generator has to be setback fifty feet from the property line, they can be pretty loud.
Cool.
Um. There's a labeling item, the number nine. Um, low-impact development. This is something we added to our site plan requirements that we have low-impact development standards. What I've noticed, though, in administering this is that we have low-impact development standards. Um, only for multifamily and commercial. And. We've seen some site condominium developments or PUDs that are just single-family or two-family. And. It might be helpful to have this low-impact development standard for anything that requires site plan review, like a site condo. Um, so that's why that's included in number ten. Uh, number eleven is just a reference, again. Number twelve is adding a definition of erosion hazard line. Um. So, and toe of the block. Because we want to make sure people understand where that is, and I'd really like to even make it graphic. So the toe of the block is the lowest point where there's a distinct change in grade between the beach and the block face. Generally marked by a transition from a steeper to a more gradual slope. Where wave action has eroded the base of the block, creating an overhang or irregular slope. That would be your power. Um, another change to just a table. Um, a definition of structure. We've noticed that retaining walls are not, um, defined as either a structure or a building. In an ordinance, you either have a building or a structure typically. So we wanted to add retaining wall to that list. And then, um, this, this minor change, our, our township engineer wanted that we clarify that type of gravel with a private road. To, um. To this type twenty-one AA. Reference for asphalt, you know, it's like the size of the gravel. Those, that's a whole host of changes, that's a whole lot of stuff to digest, and I know you have even more time, maybe you thought to look at this. Um, and I know that there's people who are in the audience and, um. They have comments during, during. Either this item, even though it's not a public hearing, or maybe during the second public comment period.
Well, I mean. I'm okay with hearing from people that may have, you know, insight as to how to make this better. I, I do have one question, uh. I mean, I don't know how this fits exactly, but probably excavation, earth-moving, land contouring. Um. Do we, as a township, require? If you're going to move land, uh, an excavation on it?
No. Other than if you're doing it for mining. It's for sale.
I suggest we do. Uh. I mean, I feel like it would cover, I mean, it would cover a lot of these things that we're talking about here, that if you're going to. You're going to put a shovel in the ground and you're going to change the topography of a piece of property. Uh, that there should be a requirement to come in with a grading plan. And get a, a permit, which I know some of these comments cover some of that. But I. I mean, I even think about it as far as the, behind the shell property. Where they're, you know, they've got, they've got excavators out there, there are scrapers running, you know, reshaping the topography of the land. And I ask myself, what, did they get a permit for it? And, you know, and, I mean, the trees was another thing, but, but, you know, to move land. Uh, and change the topography should be something that should be controlled.
And I know that, I mean, the county has their soil erosion and sedimentation control permit and. Um. And, but, yeah, I think, I, I, I'm agreeing with you and also.
We do just cover a wide variety of things if we.
Yeah.
Added, you know, an excavation requirement.
And also, I, um, I forgot to mention that. That requirement that we put in the overlay. We reviewed the city of Douglas zoning ordinance, we reviewed the city of Sagittar. City of South Haven, South Haven Township, Chickaming Township. Had that interview with, um, Eagle. So, know that we've taken some of, of those best practices and put that into here, so. The language requiring the grading plan and sealed by an engineer is something that other communities are requiring.
Oh, and I think that's all very good.
Okay. And in addition, you're right.
I just think as.
Yes.
You know, as a township, why? Right, because it could be applicable in many situations.
Yeah, right, yeah.
It could avoid problems, but. Right, that's true, yeah. I like, I mean, the idea of, you know, matching grade, uh, to me, I, I. Feel like there's. Like in the, uh. What's it called, the, uh? The, uh, say, like, there's like a grading law. Uh, you know, that, or drainage law. That, you, you have. Must have to meet the requirement, not obstruct flow of, of water across the lot. But I don't know the specifics of it, but. But I, I, so I like the fact that that in there, I think that makes a lot of sense.
What's, what's the proposed setback from the higher-risk erosion line?
I think it's seventy-five.
Build seventy-five.
You build seventy-five feet back, but there's a limitation on the square footage. If you're a hundred and fifty feet back, as I understand it, don't open this. Then there isn't a limitation on a square footage. I believe.
So, so that's, that's, uh. All throughout the township, are you proposing something unique in this sliver of land?
The, there, I didn't, there is no proposed setback from that erosion line. That's different from what the state has. The, the difference is that. On the street side, we're saying that the house has to be over there. So it could, I guess, the, a home or building could extend to that erosion line. Um. But we're not making the setback from the erosion line any greater than. What is regulated by the state.
Okay, thanks.
But, um, it probably should be referenced in here, I think that's, uh, you know, would be helpful.
Can I just ask you a couple of questions, is that okay?
Oh, sure, yeah.
You, you, first, you know, I get it, like the contour, you know, uh. You know, that, see what's going on in some places, but in my own place, you know, somebody doesn't come to do something, well. You guys see what's going on there. So, of course, there's barriers, there's permits to someone to come here and fix that. Right? I, I don't know, I've never, you know, had an experience with real estate, it's hard to represent some people, so.
This, this wouldn't affect that, this would just affect what. From a new building, if, if somebody were to tear down your mother's home. And build a new building, where could that building be located? Could it have a basement or not? The block would have to be an able apartment if you wanted to do. Some block protection that, you know, the, right immediately on the beach.
Yeah, but then there could.
But that's a sec, that doesn't, isn't affected by this, as I understand.
We're not talking about being a charter.
Just where a new home could be.
Okay, uh, and, and then the setback, it looks, you said forty feet, is that a state setback, and then seventy-five feet, or? That's kind of what we're dealing with here, we're here. Forty feet or. No offense, you know, forty feet, seventy-five feet, a hundred and fifty feet, you know, it's kind of like. Or, you know, I'm trying to, you know, just trying to, we, we have some people, the house is for sale. It's been shown, and, and our realtor is trying to be honest, you know. And some people just back off, there's some people who. See what you're trying to do, and they, they still are interested, so we're trying to. You know, uh, facilitate, maybe get the right kind of person to come in here, but we're, we're just, we're just, oh, that's.
So the, the setback from the street from, uh, Lake Shore Drive is forty feet. And that's always been the setback. Um, from the water, the setback from the erosion line. That setback is determined by the state of Michigan.
Oh, so. That's seventy-five feet.
That is seventy-five feet.
In some areas, my, for my property, just down the road is one thirty. Right, and you guys are, you guys are neighbors, I'm further down, so I setback is a hundred and thirty.
So we got forty, seventy-five.
Yeah.
And then we got fifteen, fifteen.
Yeah, that's right.
Drain is forty and forty. The natural drink, because there's a natural drink. Yeah, I mean, that, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah, I'd be happy to kind of look at your parcel map and. And show you where that building could be. Um. Even after the meeting or another time.
Okay.
Done up and, and answer those specific questions.
Okay, I mean, maybe, uh.
And maybe I already have, I, I've talked to a few people and realtors, um, on Lake Shore, so. It might be that we looked at this too.
Um. And, and is that, uh, form that you're, is it ordinance, is that what you call it, is that, is that public?
Yeah, it was in the email packet and I can make you a.
Okay, um.
You can actually take my company.
Maybe it's just better, if you're not voting on any today, maybe, you know, we can talk with their return next Tuesday or something.
For sure, yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, like, like I said, I just wanted, you know, say that, you know. Uh, me too, it's my mom's property, and of course, Doug and Shaw are really nice people, you know, I, I hope it ends up. I answer someone, you know. Oh, they'll take care of it, but, you know, we're just trying to facilitate, you know, and, I mean, you know, the, so that, you know, they're, I mean, if I. Had some people come up and tell me, oh, you know, so, so is it worth it? You get the waiting with it, or, you know, I don't think that's the case, you know.
It's just somebody trying to get a better deal.
Or maybe, okay.
So. Our next step minutes, we, and this is, uh. Agenda items. Next minute, or?
Are there other, are there other just people that want to talk to me and sign? I'm happy to do that.
Um, I guess, one of the comments, just as I'm, I'm listening to this evolve. Uh, is when new ordinances are introduced. You would ask that, um, they take into consideration existing properties. Whether they be the existing land or the existing homes. Uh, what, what I've seen happen is like, in the city of Sagittar, on, um, uh, Park Street. They changed the ordinance, they basically made every house non-conforming. So anybody who wants to do anything with their house, whether it be put on a deck or this or that. They have to go get, uh, their, to do that. And I think that's, that's bad zoning, to not consider what exists. But make something totally different, then you make all that, those other things non-conforming. Um, so, maybe a study could be done, what is existing, and see how this will impact. Those properties, whether they be existing homes or existing lots, because as they brought here. You start discussing setback, 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 setback. Have you now just taken away the ability for that particular existing lot to be, to be built? So I'm just saying that's something to, to look at and consider, or you could do it, say, well, what is there? And how will this ordinance?
Um, I actually have a rebuttal. I'm, I'm Shaw Manning, I'm twenty-five sixty-six, Lake Shore Drive. We live next door to Brian Goodes', mom, who passed away. But we also live next door to a humongous hole that was dug. And absolutely debilitated that property and put two of the ugliest houses that are supposed to be vacation rentals. If you're going to say that what is there should have a grandfather clause. These two properties on this humongous caved-out dune, doom. It should not have had that, I'm sorry, they shouldn't have been able to do that in the first place.
I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying.
Good. Of what?
What I'm saying is to just consider what is existing there and see how it's impacted. What I'm saying is to just consider what is existing there, and see how it's impacted. Not saying exempt them, I'm just saying that should be a consideration as you're carving out a new one, it's going to affect the entire area.
Yeah, except though, if somebody's setback is at ten feet now, and it, it belonged today, that's ten foot setback. Should they, if they wanted to put in a deck. That approaches on that ten feet setback, shouldn't they be required to conform if that is now, and you ordinance not allowed?
Yeah, I'm saying it should be looked at, is all I'm asking.
But they should have to conform with what we believe is the standard.
Or, or multiply for a variance.
Apply for variance. But they shouldn't all of a sudden be, just because somebody might want to.
Right, still.
You know, into that, what is now not allowed as a front ordinance, they shouldn't be allowed to necessarily do that.
I'm not proposing that, I'm just saying, take, it's a great thing to do.
I think there might be a misunderstanding about. I guess it would be what you were talking about, as far as making a property non-conforming. It's not about, I guess, for example, I think almost with the forty-foot setback, or forty-foot minimum. Almost every house south of the washout will become non-conforming. Because, you know, many are set back quite deep, and so you might have a thousand-foot lot, and now your house is in the middle. There's still five hundred feet from the erosion line, but now your house is non-conforming. And if you own one of these deep lots, a thousand feet, you're now going to make people build right on Lake Shore. And they're going to have eight hundred feet from the erosion line, when someone else could potentially have seventy-five. I don't know that that blanket forty-foot minimum. Um. Is, you know, applied fairly, because the depths of the lot vary so much.
I get that, I, I mean, I think that that's. That's probably the biggest, one of the biggest changes that I think has a sticking point that needs to be. Done through, I mean, maybe, maybe it's not going to work, right?
Or it's just question of variance, depending on how.
Maybe some particularly percentages, or somehow would, then if your lot is really deep, it would affect the forty feet, so you wouldn't have to build right around Lake Shore.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, in their area, it's stinky.
I think what you're trying to do is make it so not all homes are built on the same seventy-five foot line across. But what you're doing now is making any new home be exactly at forty feet on Lake Shore Drive, which is the problem on the other side of their lot.
Also. I just go ahead, I, I, I think you're misunderstanding. She cannot, she's not touching, or the township's not touching from the, the bluff line to. Because I can build back a hundred and thirty feet, when I built the home, it was ninety, now with the setback, now at a hundred and thirty, but I have a very deep lot.
Right, but your house will be non-conforming, because it has to be forty feet, once this is passed, it's the forty feet.
I'm still, I still, today, if I built like my neighbor's next door just built a home, it's a hundred and thirty feet setback. I can still build a home at a hundred and thirty feet setback.
Not if you have a thousand-foot lot, you'll be building forty feet from Lake Shore Drive.
Then what is in here, then?
Oh, I misunderstood. I know, that's why. Okay, I didn't, I, I heard that, but I thought I misunderstood, okay.
I think the intent, and perhaps there's a different way of. Solving this, right, I think when we talk to John, John of the state. The concern is that houses, and rightfully so, you buy a lakefront, you want to be as close as possible to the water. However, that has resulted in concerns, because you are so close, they haven't changed, changed that setback in decades. And to do that, you're also creating quite a large construction site, to get all of that equipment and. Everything, driveways, everything back, and you're placing all of that impervious surface as close as possible to where that erosion line is starting. So, the conversation was, how could we get, have people start to think more about building their homes further and closer to the road? So that was one solution, it's like build right there at the setback, I don't know that it's an elegant, good solution, but maybe there's another way.
I'm going to say I've gone through two high waters, and if I had my brothers, I would hunt that sucker on the other side of my creek in a heartbeat. That way I don't stress out, I wouldn't have spent a hundred and fifty grand on ring, I would have been okay with the block going. That's me, because I watched that lake, and I've seen what it's done. And had I known, I would have hauled my husband back, because he wanted to see the water hitting the beach, and the curls, and we still don't see it, so. I, I agree, that you need to teach people, or to help them, because that's the whole goal, you want to see that beautiful lake as close as possible. And when you start hitting a high water, it's scary as all get up, and you're losing property. So, to protect somebody that doesn't know any different, and my neighbor next door built a five million dollar home. And he and I talked about it, and he built at the one thirty, and he asked me numerous times, what do you think? And I said, I put it far back as possible. And he has a two, twenty-foot wall covering a hundred and eighty-five feet, and twenty-foot high of urn, and it failed the first storms. So, even, even that does, so, I get what she's trying to do, and.
Yeah, I'm not speaking about, I, you're telling me you're speaking to me, I'm not speaking about the setback, or.
I know, I, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just, I'm just talking from my heart.
Okay, you're imagining that me, so I.
No, that's me, I'm not being, I'm not being.
No, I think we're all just trying to.
Find the best.
Find a solution, and, and it's hard, because, I mean, some of it is just. Property owners have rights, right, and so, you know.
But you want to protect them too.
Seeing what people do, and talking to the state and all, who really know this. And then trying to just spill that down into things that are common sense. And, you know, some things that are understandable and forcible, and. But, or long, long-range focused. But it's, it's forty feet from the road, and seventy-five feet from the lake, right?
Right, right. And it's always been that.
That, that has never changed, and it's not changing.
And it used to be fifteen and fifteen, it's going to go back to fifteen, when your dad was commissioned, when your dad was a. Township supervisor was fifteen.
From the side.
From the side.
From the road is fifteen.
No, four, four. Always been forty. So none of that's really changing for you.
The drain. The drain, yeah, we do have setbacks from waterways.
There's a creek that runs through. The good, the property.
But, yeah, they, we talked to other people too, and they indicated that, you know. You can, the drain commission, you can block it. You, you can do certain things, but you, you know, whatever Eagle approves, the drain commission approves, so there might not, you know, ways to protect it.
Yeah, um, so next steps, I guess, would be, we could discuss it again at the March meeting. We could, you could direct me to make some changes, and still, and have a, have a discussion at the March meeting. You could direct me to make changes and set a public hearing for the March meeting. Um, even if there is a public hearing, it doesn't mean you have to recommend it to the board. You can keep, decide to keep working on it. It's, it's really up to you.
I personally feel one more discussion of it would be. As far as, you know, from a, because there are some things that were brought up tonight, that it sounds like you need to think through a little bit. Figure that out, I mean, I can't imagine it'd be a long discussion.
And if that's the case, we will then likely need the board to extend that moratorium another, maybe two months.
I was going to ask, there is a time.
Yeah, it, it expires in April.
So, equal.
Yeah.
So, are you going to extend the moratorium there?
We, that's not our purview, it would be the township board, I'm just letting them know, if we don't. If we don't have the hearing, and then. Um, we have, to see here, just, do we, do you remember is it March, or April that it expires, or April? April, yes. So if we had a hearing in March, if it were to be recommended in March, the planning commission meeting, it would go to the board at their April.
It seems doable, doesn't it? Yeah.
I mean, I, I'd rather not conforming section, I think that if we, if I take another step, or. Well, half the forty-foot requirement. Yeah, to me, that's a big issue.
Creative solution that does good for short lots, medium-sized lots, and really long lots. Play out the scenario, and play out the new rule ideas in those three scenarios. And knowing that, someone who buys a house, they always play that trick of, oh, I'm just going to rip down three walls and keep one wall and build up again, they can still do that, correct?
Yeah, and with a non-conforming structure. You can come in and get a variance, but we do allow, even if you're not conforming for. You know, a front yard setback, you can still add on to the side, or the rear, without coming in to get a variance. Um, you can still add on. At the front, but not make the setback more, you know, you can't create a. Enlarge your. Or extend your. But I do think, looking at those scenarios, I do feel like I can. Look at some other best practices, and maybe lean into some of the expertise in this room, and around the table with that forty feet. You know, maybe there's no way to do it. But. To me, that's kind of the biggest thing right now.
Thanks, look at you. As far as the, what I brought up with it, as far as the grading permit, is that, that's more of a, is that a staff decision?
That is something that we could add to the general ordinance amendment list here.
I'm surprised it's not required.
I am. Sorry, I just have one, one comment I want to make in regards to no basements, and just because of a footprint of a home. Um, a lot of people put their.
Mechanical.
Yeah, a ma- a maintenance room, mechanical room, thank you, that's what I wanted. Um, mechanical room, and now you're going to add a footprint of more space sitting there, whatever size that might be on the house. We're maybe possibly putting a Michigan, a small, just little dinky Michigan basement. And then this, and for the mechanical.
That the furnace goes in, and you're hot water.
Hot water furnace.
There can be one consideration, but you.
And I'm just throwing it out there to take away the space, the, the footprint of the size of the home, that puts away, it's not a lot of space, but it's just a thought.
So it's not a crawl spacing.
Four-foot crawl spacing.
In the crawl, crawl.
A crawl spacer, oh, I should get basement basically, that's what I'm saying, not a deep dig. So it's just a thought process.
You were saying you could do that?
I, I, four-foot crawl spacer is a first element, it's probably a year ago.
Yeah.
So you, you're thinking something more than a crawl space?
No, I'm saying basically a crawl space, yeah, oh, you do have.
Yeah, it's a crawl.
Yeah, see, I, I thought you were saying allow someone to put, not full basement, but put in a ten-by-ten, or fifteen-by-fifteen foot basement, which is.
A Michigan, but a Michigan basement.
No, no, a full-height basement, so, poor guy working on your furnace.
Well, that's true.
It's, it's not going to.
That's actually what we did.
It's in the.
They was going to do the six-foot, which, you know, somebody tall would be touched over, so it just.
But if you wanted to, it'd be considered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of a maximum size.
That people can.
The idea behind not allowing the basements is so you're not excavating into the doom.
Yes.
However. The idea of doing that, that small area is to not increase your footprint. Yeah, so it's a good, it's a good. It's just a thought. I wouldn't have bothered, so, thank you for bringing it up. But then you, then you're seeing that, we can probably make. Changes that we talked about today, or come up with some good solutions prior to the next meeting, then we could, could have the.
The hearing at the next meeting, at the March meeting.
Yeah, we can have the, the.
Yeah, so fifteen-day notice. And like I said, if there are issues, it doesn't mean that it has to be recommended.
Right, right. But no, and then we're, then we're moving forward.
And I encourage anyone else, if they have other comments, please email or call, make an appointment. You know, all of you live and work in this area day, every day, so please feel free to try them.
Any one more thought on the. The full-height mechanical room idea?
Yeah.
Because we're saying we don't want full basements, fifteen feet from the property line, I think it would be appropriate to say, if someone wants to do a full-height mechanical room. It can't be fifteen feet from the property line, it has to be twenty-five, or thirty, or some, some number. To match the spirit of the intention of the fifteen feet, and the intention of the no basements. So, does that make sense?
I don't.
So, so, the reason for the no basement is, to dig a full basement, it could be eight feet, ten feet deep, at the fifteen-foot line. From the front of the property sites, which means that you're going in another five feet to keep it safe for workers out there.
Yeah.
You get really close to your neighbor, we don't want that to happen. So, if, I, I think it's appropriate for us to allow people to put in a fifteen-by-fifteen mechanical room, but do it more to the center of their property. Not over to the side, left side.
Or just underneath the main house.
Underneath the main house, exactly, then it, it is in harmony with the spirit of the basement. We let it go to the edge of the house, we're actually trashing the spirit of the no basement.
Hello?
How is Joe? Hi, Joe.
Hi, Joe Malakis, Lake Shore Drive, two-eight-eight-seven. Just to chip in on your discussion regarding setbacks from the hazard line and basements. The state, high-risk erosion has defined the setbacks in high-risk erosion areas based upon the rate of erosion over thirty years. And what they've done is they set a thirty-year erosion line, and a sixty-year erosion line. And, and depending what that erosion rate is at that particular area. Then they end up saying, like, it's, it's an example, the thirty-year erosion line, the setback is sixty feet. The thirty, the sixty-year erosion line is, is a hundred and twenty feet. And then they also say, with regard to basements, and if you're going to build. Between the, the thirty-year line and the sixty-year line, that it has to be a movable, readily movable structure. And that's where they do not allow basements, because they become difficult to move. So that's where you cannot build a basement pursuant to the state. But if you meet the outer, longer-range setback. But if you meet the outer, uh, longer range setback, then you, you may under the state rules. So I would kind of ask you, take a second look at why you would want to do something different. And inconsistent than what the state has been living with for many, many years. And with regard to those erosion rates, uh. I'm not sure there are many that I'm aware of, where any buildings that were built meeting the thirty or sixty year erosion lines, uh, were actually in jeopardy. Uh, even today, so you might want to take a second look at. Tampering with the state provisions on that, you know, they've looked at that a long time and did a lot of studying. That's my thought on those items, thank you.
I will say though that there's a home next to us that's built right on that seventy five foot line, and has a full basement, and it was just approved. A year ago, so it's, that is not.
Holding true.
Not holding true. So if we don't think their basement should be there, it should be really clear to people.
Well, the basement thing as well was taken from discussions with Chicken King and, like all these other groups. So, I mean, I know they put a lot of thought into it as well, but I'm just wondering. Do you know what their reasoning was from it, I gotta believe it was to not excavate and disturb the soils so that, you know, potential for erosion and. Issues, but, I mean, I, I don't, I'm just guessing, I don't know.
Correct, that, that was why.
Okay.
And we, I mean, we are able to be more restrictive than the state. To some, just on that.
Okay, so at this point, uh, do we need to take action then into, uh, no, we don't. So we're just. We'll just be moving on, and saying that the next time we're, we will have the public hearing regarding all of this.
Yeah, it'll be in ordinance format, I'll have our township attorney work on that and, um. And I'll make sure I can highlight any changes from the version that you're seeing today.
Okay.
Awesome.
So we talked about the mechanical rooms. Um, having a mechanical room where the center of the house, not right at the building walls. Um, and then. Adding something to our ordinance related to grading earth movement permit generally. And then reviewing the nonconforming implications. And then fixing the issue with the forty foot, um, build to line. We want their fault. And then, um, I think just taking another look at the hazard, uh, line, the setback. It's making sure it's clear in here that we're referring to the states.
We did fall in with what Gordon said regarding the, the mechanical room. But maybe we just worded as, uh, the, the excavation and overdig does not encroach into the setback. Or some, you know, greater than what it would be to dig from the house. I think, cause that's, that's.
Say we've got ten feet.
Cause you don't want to say just the center, cause maybe there was, who knows what that architecture's.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah. Danger neighboring properties. All right, well, thank you everyone for, uh, coming and, you know, to your insight and helping us with.
Well, thank you.
All this hard work, you guys appreciate it. So at this point, we'll, uh, move on to old business, which there is none, so. Uh, at that point, we'll move on to communications and, uh, correspondence. As far as, and, oh, we don't, uh.
Oh, the correspondence, I'm sorry, I was taking notes. I did want you all to know that the city of Douglas is in the process of updating their master plan. Um, they're gonna have their draft plan on the city's website. I just got a note from, another correspondence from them, that the public hearing for the master plan is at March, March eleventh.
Right. Thank you.
It's actually time for us to take a look at the open hours as well.
It's been time for a while.
Well, the, um, a note on that, the township did receive a housing readiness grant. Um, and they're working with Progressive. Um, on a housing study for the township that would then inform an amendment to the master plan. You know, specific to the housing conversations we've had, so. There is some conversation on that, but, um, what they're doing is not an amendment to the plan, it just provides the basis and background. Only with respect to housing.
Then, uh, any planning commissioner comments? Nope. All right, do we have a, a board report or, since Cindy's not here?
We knew board reference unable to come down. Very helpful.
They've been doing good stuff. That would have been in the report.
Then, uh, any staff project updates, uh?
No.
No. Okay. Uh, then we will go into, uh, the next public comment period, if there's anyone that has need. And say that they haven't already said.
You've got a beautiful job to do, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, and I'll close public comment period, and, uh, at this point, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, aye, aye, thank you everyone.